Went away a little bit.
And we should be live.
All right. Good afternoon. It's 2:34 and would like to start the meeting, the Commission of Social Innovations Public Capital Meeting. And I ask Yasin, if you can just call for the attendance roster for today's meeting?
Thank you, Chair Chairman. I'm about to pull out the roster. We have Chairman John Yonan.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Brutus.
Present.
Commissioner Christie Delaritas.
Sarah Covitas here as her proxy.
Right. Welcome, Sarah.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Absolutely. Well, I want to thank everybody for joining us, for those that are able to join us through the different social media. You know, connections down the road. We've got some really exciting opportunities, some things that are brewing on the Public Capital Committee. Some things that, you know, are kind of in transition as well. And so I'm glad the timing of this meeting. And some things that we have on the agenda regarding the Port Authority is going to create a little bit of a conversation of some opportunities. As you know, we get to that point in this agenda that I would like to discuss with the team. So really, the agenda was the main part of the update that I wanted to basically kind of share is, you know, some opportunities that we have. That would like to discuss in the Village of Linwood with Sarah and the folks over at SSMMA. You know, Patrick, just some of the initiatives that we have going on at the port with, I think you've probably heard that their executive director has stepped down. And the opportunity that we have here with perhaps the appointment of some new leadership over there to just, you know, be able to kind of discuss some of the initiatives, some things that we have done that could maybe provide some of that encouragement and some, some opportunity for the new director to come in and run with some of our initiatives. So with that, I will first like to go to item number two in the agenda. After that little update and ask if there is any updates from the commissioners. So we will start with you, Commissioner Brutus.
I have no pertinent updates that are in alignment with our work here in the Public Capital Committee.
Okay. All right.
But I'm happy, but I'm happy to welcome Sarah to the meeting today in standing in for, for Christie, and it's good to see you and have you join us today.
Thank you.
Yes, and we will turn it over to you. If you've got any updates, we can call you Commissioner in training or.
Commissioner in training. Well, I with, to go along with that title, I do not have any updates at this time, but I'm happy to be here and happy to fill in for Christie. And if there's any, you know, discussion down the line, happy to, you know, be here in her stead.
Okay. Well, great. Again, thank you. And we definitely think, you know, that the opportunities with, especially in this, you know, COVID world that sometimes getting down to some of the meetings, although, you know, social innovation, Chairwoman Anaya had mentioned opportunities of going out in visiting various, you know, parts of the county to host some of these meetings. But just having them available in kind of this, you know, virtual world, we, we welcome you and others from SSMMA to continue to, you know, join us in future meetings. Not only the committee meetings, but the actual meetings themselves. So we, but we're going to start off with number three, really a, a discussion of an initiative in the South, you know, land that I'd like to kind of share a, a letter that we had received from the Mayor of Linwood. And, you know, this is something that, you know, Commissioner Brutus, that we had gotten a lot of traction when Cook County Department of Transportation and Highways, along with the Cook County's Bureau of Economic Development, put together the Lincoln Highway Industrial Corridor Plan. In the south part of Cook County, along Lincoln Highway, a state highway, the village of Chicago Heights of Saw Village and Chicago, I'm sorry, Chicago Heights, Ford Heights and Saw Village, Lincoln Highway running through that area is ripe for potential economic development. And so about four years ago, we initiated a plan to look at ways that we could identify in these communities. Opportunities where some of the land could get marketed to, you know, various ways of, of possible industrial, commercial, or even potential residential development. And we came up with a actual master plan that kind of was a book like that ended up getting a lot of, of real interests from some of the other committees in social innovation. And so what I was proposing to do, and we will share this letter, you know, after this meeting is, is to look at the Village of Linwood. And how there are a couple corridors that run through Linwood and then the potential of a project that Cook County Department of Transportation Highway is leading, which is a extension of Jawar Road through the village. And how the mayor is looking to do something similar to that Lincoln Highway Industrial Corridor Plan. And since that was kind of again, a undertaking by county agencies. And as it was brought to social innovation, it was already kind of in that, you know, development phase. We think this is an opportunity for us in Linwood to maybe start it with the different committees, knowing that this will be one of the projects that we could initiate and bring social innovation in right from the beginning. So Sarah, if, you know, you could maybe weigh in a little bit about, I know that obviously Mayor Williams, the mayor of Linwood is a very, you know, great, you know, outspoken leader in the Southland about opportunities for economic development. And just wanted to get your feedback. And I'm not certain if you remember the Lincoln Highway Corridor Industrial Plan. And if you could comment about opportunities on how social innovation could look at this Linwood, you know, possible industrial corridor master plan.
Yeah, this is a really exciting project. I mean, Linwood is a community with such opportunity for planning and for innovation. And I think that this plan really speaks to that. And I think the fact that, you know, this commission is really getting in, like you said, getting in at the beginning of the process, I think is going to be incredibly valuable. So there, you know, it'll be a cohesive plan all the way through. And then the mayor of Linwood obviously is such a wonderful, you know, such a great advocate for his community and for his residents. And so I think that this is going to be a really kind of excellent driver for economic development in the Southland and especially obviously along this corridor. And hopefully will serve as a model that we can use throughout our communities, kind of using this. You know, bringing in the Social Innovation Commission at these early stages, and then we can kind of continue this trend as in other communities as well.
Yeah. And have you had a chance to look at that Lincoln Highway Industrial Corridor Plan by chance?
Um, you know, I'm no expert. I do wish Christie was here for that, but.
If you happen to be familiar with it, that's all.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm familiar with it, but Christie is definitely going to be the expert on that. Because I was not here when that was first being kind of assembled. But I do know exciting project and SSMMA is really excited about it, as is the Village of Linwood.
Yeah. And, and the only reason I bring that up is, as I said, when we kind of shared it with social innovation. You know, you had a number of the other committees that, you know, were in the finance side that said, you know, we, we'd love to know what are some of the, you know, taxing challenges in the Southland, which again, we know is a big initiative of South suburban mayors and managers to try to get some legislation to bring, you know, some tax relief to some of the properties down there. And so just that awareness, everyone seemed to think that that was again, a model for us to be able to kind of get, you know, a little more awareness in the Southland. So thank you again for, you know, that kind of desire to maybe look at that as this is an opportunity. And I know for you, Patrick, you know, when we talk about the Southland, just because you're Chicago, you have a number of, you know, great, you know, experiences in working in the Southland, you know about the tax challenges. What could you kind of, you know, give us feedback about in the Village of Linwood to take on a, a possible assignment like this one?
So thanks. And this is a great undertaking by the county because I think, well, I know. Well, let me, let me first say, I grew up in University Park, so I'm from the South, Southland, right? And I have worked on many of these areas in my previous career with the Illinois Department of Transportation Division of Highways. And so I know Jawar Road, I know Route 30, I know all these little backstreets intimately. Cause I used to, you know, drive around and hang out when I was younger in all these neighborhoods. I, you know, I have friends from all the different high schools that are out in the South area. So I'm happy to hear that there is a, you know, an approach, a strategy that's being worked on right now to look at how to improve the economic conditions along Route 30 in the corridor. Because it is that, and you know that the county has been invested in doing the, you know, safety in this neighborhood for, or, you know, Ford Heights and Chicago Heights for, for years now. Because of the, you know, the economic infrastructure does not allow these communities to be self-supporting with their own police forces. And so we're already there. So this is another next logical step to figure out how to drive economics in this area so that these villages can be more self-sufficient. So that's a good thing. You know, when you look at going across, heading east on Route 30 from Ford Heights over 394 and into Linwood. It's a challenge, right? Because it's mostly industrial. There is a, you know, I think there's a gentleman's club there, which is the economic engine, unfortunately. And I think there's some, you know, trailer parks and golf course or, or driving range or, you know, some, there's some very small things there. And so if we can actually through SSMMA have a plan that actually identifies what are the highest and best uses for land and what can be accomplished with the appropriate zoning changes to really develop these, you know, these areas, I, I, you know, I am all for, right? I am all for that. And I think though it's going to require us to also T-bone that with not only Route 30, right? But we're also, I think, going to have to look at the Torrance Avenue Corridor as we get to that intersection, right? And what can be developed along that to kind of bookend, right? Cause I think the goal here is to develop this corridor with the idea that Ford Heights could actually see something develop over there, right? I mean, the only thing that's over there is the Ford plant. And I forget the cross street, it might be State Street, but the Ford plant is the other logical bookend for where the economics are. And in the middle there, you have like one or two small little retail supported by a gas station and a little convenience store, but you have a residential neighborhood there. So we have workforce, right? That, that potentially exists within these boundaries, east and west. And, you know, we used to have another engine, but, you know, St. James, the hospital's closed and that was on, you know, Chicago Road. You know, we need something impactful. I'm hopeful that the association is going to, you know, put everybody to work. And I'm here, I'm glad to hear that the mayor of Linwood is also on board with, you know, supporting the, the idea for a creation of a plan because I think it's probably way overdue. And I'm glad that this is something that, you know, we're supporting here at the county and our social innovation public capital committee here. If, you know, I think probably, you know, in the days that lie ahead, once we get more information, we can determine how perhaps the the highway division, right? Could, you know, play, you know, a initial role with the improvement of streets, right? Within that, that vicinity. So I'm excited about the idea of, of an improvement out in this area. It's way overdue. And hopefully it can lead to, you know, developing, you know, the inter smaller retail that needs to be probably situated on the western edge as we build more towards east, right? As east is more industrial, right? So.
And Indiana, which again, you know, I, I think again, Sarah, you could, you know, kind of vouch for this as well as they, you know, they built that great soccer, you know, tournament stadium. You know, where a lot of folks come out, they're playing soccer.
The Southland Center, right?
Yes, we've heard people say, well, you know, just to go grab a Coke, you know, a little beverage and some chips, like there, there's nothing available out there unless again, you cross into Indiana, which most people, you know, on at least Illinois side, don't, don't know what's on that other side, you know, that are coming from the Orleans and Tinley, which again, this is a very popular soccer league that's, that's coming from that area. So, so we need to keep again, as you said, those businesses, you know, on our side of, you know, the state line that these, you know, this, this stadium could be able to serve. Yeah, Sarah, did you have a comment on that?
No, you know, I, I just wanted to kind of, you know, back up. What has been said about how important land uses in the South suburbs and how, how it really is overdue in this area. And I think that what you said earlier and what Christie, I mean, always talks about in one of SSMMA's, you know, as you mentioned, our largest kind of crusade at this point is the, the issue of taxation and land use and just making, trying to find, you know, sustainable land use methods. Factoring in, um, you know, the, the issues of tax revenue and vacant land and industrial land and, you know, residential kind of bearing the brunt of the tax revenue in the area. And so I think that these types of land use plans with a really kind of forward-thinking approach is, it's really going to make all the difference. And like, like it's been said here, it's so long overdue. And I mean, yeah, what you're saying, the fact that you have to cross the state line to go buy a soda when you're at a soccer game is outrageous. So I mean, what we're looking for in these communities and what we're looking for in all our communities is hopefully, you know, we, we obviously want to encourage growth, we want to encourage taxes, but we also want to create communities that are livable and are, you know, places where people can easily live, they can, they can walk, they can, you know, utilize different modes of transportation. They don't have to necessarily get in their car to go buy a snack, that type of thing. So hopefully this will lead to that. That's ultimately our goal is to create more livable communities, both from an economic standpoint and from a land use livability, um, you know, person-based standpoint as well.
Yeah.
So John, let me jump in here and, and thanks for saying that, Sam, because it made me think of another thing that I want to raise. With respect to the scope of work area that we're talking about, the Route 30 corridor east of the Bishop Ford, the 394, sorry, 394, do we have any existing TIF districts over there that would help to, you know, maybe incentivize or encourage developers to look at this area, knowing that there could be a subsidy? Do we have any other tools besides, you know, tax abatement that the county offers?
I'm not aware of any TIFs. There is one in the Chicago Heights area, which is a little bit kind of, there is some there. I, I just don't have that knowledge.
Right. Okay. That's good. Yeah. Cause if we, you know, if, if there is one, and we know that the TIFs are locally managed right by the villages. And so, you know, Linwood and or Ford Heights, you know, if there's a TIF in that area where we are hoping that we could drive, you know, investment. And that would be a great tool for them to use as a carrot to entice developers to at least look at these areas for possible, you know, investment. And you're absolutely right. The Southland Center north of here along the Glenwood-Dyer Road Corridor is, you know, for this area. An economic engine, right? It's like you said, it's a great indoor facility. It drives a lot of, you know, youth sports and there's a lot of activity. I know we've, you know, we've played some basketball games over there with my kid. And so like, but, but going north from there, there's nothing until you get to like Lansing, right? And so like this area is completely void. And you're right. Once you get past Torrance along 30, you got to swing it around and go to Hammond, right? Or is it Dyer? I'm not sure. But right there, like you said, you got to go to Indiana, you know, to, you know, get some kind of, you know, proof of life, right? There's got to be something I think more that we can do. And I'm, I'm, again, I'm glad that, you know, your team, Sarah and, and Christie, under your leadership at SSMMA is looking at a plan to address that. But we've got to find out if there's any incentive tools that will hopefully entice developers or, you know, private market people to look at these areas.
Well, I definitely, um, you know, I like the excitement and I will, again, share the letter, you know, as part of the minutes here and kind of give a little bit of a, maybe an outline of how maybe we can try to do something like we did similar to our Lincoln Highway Industrial Corridor Plan. But really have a lot more weigh in from, you know, social innovation. And again, this, this was, you know, an effort social innovation did from the beginning, you know, Mayor Williams was originally on, on the commission. And just some scheduling challenges have been, you know, the only reason he had to, you know, relinquish his seat. So, so I think again, that kind of leadership in the Southland, someone like a Mayor Williams is exactly what we're looking for. And I will, you know, just go ahead and kind of, like I said, add that to the minutes and then we'll kind of come up with a, a response plan after this. Okay? Yeah. Sarah, were you gonna say something?
I will say very quickly, if I could, um, just, yeah, I'm sorry. Um, if I could, just before we move on, I just wanted to say that I did just drop a link in the Zoom chat and, um, you know, maybe we can get this out. But, um, not, not to, you know, necessarily plug our, our amazing GIS data work where it doesn't belong.
Plug away, plug away.
You know, since you were mentioning TIF districts and other economic development incentives, I did just drop a link to SSMMA's Economic Development Viewer Map. And that shows just a whole host of every type of incentive that's available kind of in the Southland. And you can see that layered on a map. So, um, if you are ever curious about where the TIF districts start and stop, you know, be sure to bookmark that link and check that.
Perfect. Thank you. I just wanted to just quickly here, Patrick, we only got a couple of minutes, but just to jump in on the port side of things. Just at least put that out there that we really could look for the city's leadership and kind of your role in the economic development. Obviously the Port Authority is something we have, once again, have got a lot of interest of how regionally there's a lot of things happening. Commissioner Anaya, um, you know, Madam President, we invested in a, a, a study of the ports' short rail operations to look at ways that maybe the short rail system could serve the port more efficiently. So that is going to be a, a grant that we're giving them to, you know, commence that. And I just thought that might be an opportunity for, again, you being part of public capital, our desire in the port to kind of help, you know, play a lead role in that. So just in your couple of minutes here, just wanted some quick thoughts from you on that.
Well, I know the mayor has two appointees to the board on that, on that. So, you know, that, you know, again, like you said, smartfully, smartly includes the city. And so, uh, yeah, but I, you know, as they are in transition right now, looking for a new ED, right? And so, yeah, and I, you know, I did not know that, that. So it's a little shocking to hear that announcement today at the top of the meeting, but okay.
Sorry. Yeah, it was.
I didn't know. It, it might, it might be, you know, not for public.
It is actually, it's out there in the public space.
Okay. All right. So, well, so they're, they're going to find a new guy, a new person, and I'm sure that person's going to be dynamic and, and, you know, they'll restart the work a little bit and, and pick it up where they, where he left it off. And, and hopefully, you know, they can take on, you know, the, the work that you just said that they're going to be doing. So, uh, you know, I'll, I'll do what I can obviously to support it. But yeah, you're right. So the city's included, hopefully the mayor can get some picks in there that will be dynamic on the board and hopefully, you know, they can drive from the top. So.
And, and how is Commissioner Cox, as far as that kind of opportunity in the Southland? Obviously, you know, we talk about, you know, the red line extension and, and then being a part of the port. Is, is there things that Department of Planning and you can kind of help influence in the port?
So in our Invest Southwest Initiative, Pullman is a key corridor for us. It's one of our initial 10 corridors. And so the, the connection, right? Between some of the things that we're working on in Pullman are transportation with the new metro, well, not a new metro station, but a RTA's commitment to upgrade that station at the Kensington stop and the Pullman stop, but also the Red Line Expansion going through, you know, like 111th Street going south down along the planned rail, planned rail line along the Michigan Avenue Corridor. But it is something we could actually raise to see if we can actually not extend the corridor, but make that relationship connection so that at least we can start to follow from a planning perspective. What types of synergies can be created between the authority and the Pullman community, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause what we do have as part of our, our Invest Southwest Initiative are these community roundtables, which is a strategy that we've incorporated and started to really improve and increase the engagement between the city stakeholders and community. And so it, so what I'll do, John, I will raise the Port Authority planning process to the Pullman team within DPD. And we'll see if we can build that connection there. They certainly, you know, the new ED and/or stakeholders who are in the Port Authority, you know, project and program certainly need to be at least at the table regarding involvement at the stakeholder tables, roundtables. And so at least we can invite them and we can start to hear some of their priorities and incorporate that into the entire Pullman plan.
That's great. Well, thank you. Yeah. Three o'clock. So I will let you go, but that's really what I wanted to make sure we had a chance to chat on. And so we'll put those together with some more details in the minutes for you, Patrick. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Commissioner Sarah in training. Nice to meet you again. And Yasin, I'll jump back if I can. And I'll see if you guys are still on the, on the, on the, on the call. So thanks, Chairman. I'll check back if I can. All right.
Totally. Okay. Thank you. Great. So Sarah, again, I, we talked a little quickly on that, but to just back up a little bit, obviously the Invest in Cook Program, you're, you're probably familiar. A number of the Southland communities were able to be successful in some of the grants in our 2020 program. That obviously Commissioner Anaya, last board meeting, he had voted, you know, very favorable and made some comments about some of the opportunities. And the port, you know, continues to jump out as really a jewel that has not really tapped into kind of the, you know, other modes of, of not only transportation, but, you know, economic, you know, opportunities with, we've said all along, the, the waterway system that's under, you know, utilized. And we had a number of, of briefings from, you know, the folks over at the port that have, you know, talked about how there's just a lack of awareness of, you know, the jewel that we have with the waterway and how we can service a river system along and also the, you know, chain of lakes and, and other, you know, cities, not only in the US, but, you know, on the Canada side as well. So, you know, we, we know that on the rail side of the transportation, there's again, a, a, you know, un, you know, tapped opportunity because they haven't done any investments in that area. So that, that's kind of what this grant is just going to give them a chance to see if there are ways to make rail service to the port more efficient. And, um, you know, again, that might open up some other, you know, challenges of, of how freight is congestion through the northern part of the city there is what, you know, their application stated. So. Yeah. So any thoughts that you have or knowledge or stuff you want to share on the port at all or comments that you want to make about that?
You know, we, um, the port is not really my, uh, you know, area of expertise, but we did get, we are feeling really lucky to have so many investing cook grants in our communities. And so although I don't have a lot of interesting knowledge on the port, I will say that, you know, a lot of our communities got 100% really great projects, some really great bike pad projects in addition to some more industrial projects as well. So kind of covering the whole gamut. And we're really excited to kind of get those started and we're really thankful for those opportunities. So.
That's great. Again, you know, very great applications and those in our government, again, Commissioner and I, they approved that a little later with just the, some of the COVID challenges we've had this year. The application reviews, but, um, you know, great projects and. But um, you know, great projects, um and uh that was voted upon, you know, last month. And so now the intergovernmental agreements, uh drafts of those will be going to the uh the various, you know, whether they're mayor's or managers and their consultants to help draft those up. And and we might see a few of those, you know, um IGAs approved as early as, you know, December. So so those projects will be advancing. And uh right now, the plan is to, you know, come out with a 2021 Invest in Cook, similar to the last four years as well, so. So, okay, then, um, that really, you know, for Patrick's conversation was the important part of of the port. And, you know, again, if I can say that's where, you know, Sarah, you 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 mentioned that there might not be as much familiarity when, you know, you're outside the city of Chicago, because that, you know, port does have, again, you know, a a sphere of influence that, you know, goes from the Great Lakes into the river system, down the Mississippi, and even to, you know, the ocean ferries. Um and 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 yet the the feeling is that, well, it's in the city, and the city's got, you know, this kind of under their purview of 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 ways to kind of help develop it. And um the previous executive director had stated that, unfortunately, the the assumption is, you know, that, you know, oh, there's all this opportunity because it's in the city of Chicago. But prior to him, you know, taking over, you know, being executive director, now it didn't seem like there was any infrastructure investments ever made in the port in the last 20 to 30 years. And so the roadway systems, you know, had come to the end of its useful life. And what he would always say is that, you know, the port is more than a golf course, but unfortunately, some people feel that's all, you know, that's here. And um and that is why, you know, we really feel Cook County, you know, has stepped up, you know, leadership of the board commissioners to really look at, again, how regionally, you know, this little jewel of 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 not only transportation, you know, crossroads, but um, you know, truly developing opportunities along the waterway can um, you know, be an initiative that, you know, we we just keep our fingers crossed the new, you know, director comes in and then continues that vision of the previous director. So, you know, with that, I I really just didn't have much more to say on the port. Um, again, glad that we got a little bit of a conversation here for the minutes. But uh, you know, the moving on to the the next agenda item, really, it was just if there were some other initiatives. These were a few ideas um that I wanted to throw out there. Um, I know that on our um Public Capital's strategic goals, um one of the things that, just for the minutes, I want to spend at least a few minutes on is that um we obviously are moving forward on our fair transit, and it's a pilot um that, you know, we are advancing to possibly as soon as December have the Cook County Board Commissioner Anaya, um, you know, vote to approve that three-year pilot that will be, you know, upsetting some of the Metro fares on the Metro Electric and the Rock Island. Um and so again, that is one of the, you know, things that was um talked about and not necessarily on the minutes here, but is one of the, you know, Public Capital's um strategic goals. So there'll be more to come on that um in the next, and um, well, two county board meetings, but um definitely discuss and give an update at our next social innovation meeting. So I didn't know if you had any comments you want to make about that fair transit or any knowledge on that, Sarah, then feel free to weigh in.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that is great. We're really excited about that. Obviously, Metro Electric is such an important part of the South suburbs and a part of our regional economy and um, you know, making sure that it's accessible and it's um, you know, really um available as a um truly accessible, equitable uh option for our residents to use to get to, you know, worthwhile job opportunities and um to just travel throughout the region. It's such an important kind of piece of the South suburbs. So we're really excited about that pilot program and um, yeah, really looking forward to it.
Yeah. So thank you, and so um stay tuned. Um, there'll be more information on that in the coming, you know, um weeks and months. So um I wanted to make sure that I included that, and really that, um, there's no other new initiatives. That was really kind of the the main topics that we wanted to cover for today. So um Sarah, is there anything else, um, you know, before I move to a adjourn?
You know, I don't have anything. I'm just happy that uh I could provide whatever insight I was able to and um able to fill in for Christie and hopefully bring a little South suburbs perspective today, and thanks for having me.
Well, thank you for, again, just your, you know, great work, you know, as part of SSSMA, just the investment of, you know, commitment and time, all the different things we've had a chance to work on together and uh keep up that great work, and and thanks for jumping in today. So I will make a motion to uh to uh end the meeting, um and it's only the two of us, so I see.
I'll talk to them.
And then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, then the meeting concluded at the 3:09, so thank you. And thanks, everybody that was able to, you know, watch us streaming.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Have a great afternoon, everyone.
All right. Good, have a good afternoon. Bye-bye.